Good evening, welcome to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four regularly scheduled meeting of the Nakadochee City Council. If you will bow your head in prayer, please, we'll call the meeting to order. Heavenly Father, Lord, and Savior, King of Kings, Lord of Lords, we ask that you look over and guide and protect us tonight that we make decisions that are in the best interests of this city. We ask that, as we come up on this season, Lord Jesus, that we remind ourselves of the true meaning of Christmas, the birth of Jesus Christ. We ask that you look over and guide and protect us. We ask for world peace, and we ask that you deliver us not into temptation and deliver us from evil. In Jesus' name we pray, and for his sake, amen. Go stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we have one item in open forum. Ms. Barrios?
Ready? My name is Dana Barrios. My address is thirty-nine eighteen Red Oak. I'm here because I believe I've been given false information that can't be backed by any policy or ordinance by the Parks and Rec, and because the supervisor will not provide me with proof or answers. Other community members have expressed that they've had similar experiences with the Parks and Rec as well. I've also spoke with different council members that strongly urged me to come forward with this information. An open records request and some due diligence further seems to prove that the information given can't be backed by policy or ordinance. In contrast, I do in fact have proof of my claims, otherwise I wouldn't be here. I had no idea we would have to deal with such gross incompetence just to have an event at a public park. First off, the city website says to call to reserve the pavilion. However, we were told we couldn't reserve it, which does not coincide with the website or any ordinance I have found. From the beginning, we had issues with the coordinator, Cecilia. After she was challenged on her inconsistencies, it seems in retaliation, she gave false information on pavilion availability to ensure the day we requested as first come, first served was not available when in fact it was. When we asked for the supervisor, she lied again, claiming she was the supervisor and there was no one else we could talk to. Sadly, the dishonesty, incompetence, and unprofessionalism is only the appetizer when dealing with this staff. All of these issues were brought to Ms. Sal's attention, however, there didn't seem to be much concern. In fact, as a direct result of our complaints, I believe she also retaliated by denying us electricity for our event with no explanation, policy, or ordinance to back up her reasoning. We ultimately had to buy extension cords to run from the neighbors to the pavilion and paid these neighbors to use their electricity, not to mention the additional time, stress, and hassle this caused. The electricity had been on until we asked about it, then it seems it was intentionally turned off. Others have expressed that being denied electricity was not procedure and was most likely done in retaliation. I've emailed Ms. Sal for an explanation and supporting documentation, yet she will not respond. Her silence speaks volumes. It's an absolute embarrassment that city employees have more time for social media than their job while simultaneously disregarding community concerns. It's also been brought to my attention that there's been several inappropriate social media posts by this very staff that seems to violate city guidelines as well. I'm appalled at the lack of integrity of city personnel that's been entrusted to serve us, but instead it seems they're lying, abusing their power, and dismissing the very citizens who's paying for these positions. According to the city employee handbook, it seems there's a lot of misconduct, negligence, and other violations going on. We, the taxpaying citizens, expect accountability, resolution, and demand honest, competent, qualified employees. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next item, we'll go to awards and recognitions.
Ashley, would you come up here, please?
For the TV, you need it. For the TV, you need it for the recording. You got it?
Would you like my board members to come up as well?
Yes, please. This is a proclamation recognizing Nakadochee as a tourism-friendly community. You are our Director of CBB, and these are Ashley's four members, John McGuire, Walt Morton, and Larry King, and all that. Congratulations, you do a great job, and we're very proud of what you've done and what you continue to do for this community. I want to read the proclamation now. Whereas the city of Nakadochee recognizes the economic benefit of the tourism industry, and whereas visitors enjoy Nakadochee's attractions, including but not limited to downtown Nakadochee, historical sites such as Stern Hugia Museum and Zion Hill Baptist Church, Stephen A. Austin State University, the Pardone Hotel, Millers Crossing, the Storch Village, the Niede Creek Hall, and Hyatt Trail Parks. Whereas Nakadochee's losses one point five million visitors annually, resulting in seventy-seven point eight million in direct travel spending, resulting in seven point one million in tax revenue. And whereas the city of Nakadochee has been recognized as a film-friendly and music-friendly community, and whereas Nakadochee has been recognized as a top tourist destination in Texas, and whereas the city of Nakadochee faithfully preserves its historical roots and honors with them through multiple museums, statues, and signage across the city. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Randy Johnson, Mayor of the City of Nakadochee, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize that Nakadochee is a tourism-friendly community. Thank you so much, Ashley. And what a job well done.
Can you come in a little, Larry? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this thing will... I don't really need it.
Yeah, you do.
I don't need this thing. Oh, yeah, I'm going to. I tell you what, this is indeed a pleasure right here. I have known Gary and his family all my life. I mean, I knew his daddy, I knew his mother, we used to trade with him on North Street, buy our gas up there when we were old enough to buy gas, and my family traded with him, and Mr. and Ms. Woods were, I mean, just the salt of the earth. He had a brother that was okay, too.
Yeah, I don't know.
Anyway, Gary and I go back that long, plus high school, plus what little time, you had already graduated.
I was gone when you got that in.
Well, I was coming in and you were leaving. You're a lot older than I am, much older, you know. Anyway.
I started school when I was five.
Is that right? Well, I did, too. But anyway, I've known Gary a long time in his professional work when I was on the school board. Gary was Central Appraisal District then. He and I had lots of dealings then, and I'll tell you one thing, Gary Woods has always, always looked out for the taxpayers of this community, and has always had the best interest of Nakadochee County, the city of Nakadochee, and all the school districts of this county. That is something that is absolutely unheard of, and you don't know how much, from the bottom of my heart and from this city, that we appreciate what you've done. All this right here, you know, but I'm telling you, Gary, you are going to be missed, you are a fixture down there, and the place didn't even seem like it's the same thing without you not being there. And we love you to death. Now, I'm going to have to read this.
Stop ad libbing.
Yeah. Whereas Gary Woods was born in Nakadochee Memorial Hospital and was delivered by the esteemed Dr. James G. Taylor, and whereas upon graduation in nineteen seventy-one from Nakadochee High School, Gary Woods entered Texas A&amp;M University and became a member of the Texas Aggie Corps Cadets, graduating with a Bachelor of Business Arts in Finance, and to this day continues to fit in his Aggie uniform. And whereas Gary Woods went to work for Nakadochee Central Appraisal District for forty-four years, most of which he served as administrator of the Central Appraisal District, giving not only his financial expertise, but his compassionate heart and thoughtful concern for the well-being of all citizens. And whereas Gary Woods' decision to leave the appraisal district was a difficult one and an emotional decision to make, be it known that it was not just a job, but a home where he made lifelong friends that were family to him. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Randy Johnson, Mayor of the City of Nakadochee, on behalf of the City Council, extend our heartfelt gratitude and forever admiration to Gary Woods for a job well done. And Gary Woods, for forty-four years of honorable service to the Central Appraisal District of Nakadochee, Texas. Thank you so much. You too, Dan. Wait a minute. I want to add.
Gary wants to say something. We want to take pictures, then Gary wants to say something. We didn't have enough money to buy them, right? Okay, Gary wants to say something. John Abbott, do you want to say anything before Gary says anything?
I know Stan's worried because he knows how I am when I talk, but what I want you to know is why I was successful. I had forty-four years in two months. Mary Ann Duvall in my office is in her forty-fourth year, and in May, she's going to break my record. John Yarber, who recently retired, forty-two years. Phyllis Simons, thirty-seven years. Sheila Williams, thirty-six years. Leanne Shul, twenty-eight years. Dorian Neal, GW's nephew, twenty-six years. Elsie, who is here, Elsie, there she is, twenty-two years. Juana, she's here, eight years, and barely didn't make it, but six years. You're successful because you have good people. I had the best.
Okay. All right, next item, we'll go to the items to be removed from the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. We'll go right into the regular agenda. Item seven-eight, receive a presentation and give a report on the Nakadochee City Council and staff retreat held on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Ron Cox, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to see all of you again. It's great to be at this meeting to recognize the folks that you've recognized. It's been an honor to be here and listen to that. Not many folks work forty-four years anywhere for a whole career, much less in one spot. It's a great, great legacy that he's leaving. I wanted to take just a little bit of time to review what you all did at our session on December the seventeenth and give you a little bit of idea about where things are going at this point. Again, I always appreciate the opportunity to visit with councils and meet with councils and staff, and you all did an exemplary job together as we worked together through the course of the day in December and as well as the staff. We originally were going to have this on two separate half-days, but we ended up pushing it all together in a full day, and so I appreciated everyone being available and working together. We started the process in September, where I interviewed each of you individually. I think we were on either Teams or by phone. I met with the staff in October. We had our session in mid-October, and then I came back to meet with the staff October the twenty-ninth as well, so we met here in this room and met through the course of an afternoon, debriefing as well as talking about where do we go from here, and then tonight, of course, is the final report. We talked about governance with the council and among the council members, and then we brought the full staff in, and they talked about legislative priorities, twenty-twenty-five priorities, legislative issues, and then additional priorities that would come up during the course of that time. When we, I've already talked about our agenda for the staff session, and you'll remember this cartoon, the objective is to build the corral together and to make it where everything is predictable and consistent, as you all work, as the staff works, and so that people will know where this community is going under your leadership and guidance. So we talked about governance, the process of working together, and that consists, and we talked about these four specific areas, effective leadership, meaningful communication, understanding roles and fulfilling expectations, and proactive visioning and planning. I will mention that I did prepare a written report that should be in your packet as well, and there's one other document that I'll refer to in just a minute that's also in your report for you to refer to. The written report outlined in greater detail just the highlight, of the things that we talked about, and what I'm doing is just the highlights so that I don't take too much of your time tonight. We talked about leadership. How will you lead? And you defined for this council and for the staff and the community what your leadership philosophy will be and how you will lead, and we listed these things that you all talked about, and again, I'm not going to read through those, but they are included in your report. We talked about communication and how you will communicate with each other primarily, professionally, respectfully, and in person to the extent possible, and always in deference to our city attorney in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. And so communication is an important feature in how you communicate and that you are clear as you go through your processes of making decisions. We also, in the course of that discussion, you identified five different methods of improving communication that you wanted to use, the first of which was exploring a workshop on specific topics for staff to have specific memos from them on specific issues to you to kind of help you prepare and gather your thoughts about specific issues that may come along. One of the council members suggested that we explore, you all explore, the online forum method that's identified by the city of Austin that's being used by them, and then you kind of looked outwardly just a little bit and said, let's begin, rebegin, and prepare and conduct orientations for newly-elected members so that as new council members come on, you can prepare them better for the role that they have. And then finally, to revive what's called Nakadochee one, what was called Nakadochee one oh one that was preempted during the COVID, I think, and so this is a community training program that you all have done, and it was a way for you all to help improve communication and to revive that process that's been going on. So we identified those through the course of the day. Those came up from time to time, each of these things did. Leadership, communication, and expectation. So what are your expectations of each other? To always tell the truth, to understand and stay in the particular lane that council's in, the staff stays in their lane as well, to be fair to all concerned and to stay in the moment and not dwell on the past. Interestingly enough, the very first bullet of your expectations of staff was to stay in the moment and not dwell on the past, and so that was a theme that you all had that was pretty consistent as we talked through the course of the day, that now it's time to move forward and work together as you do that. So you outlined your expectations of the staff, to do their job, for the council and staff to work, to trust one another, to be timely in providing information, communicate with council, provide care and due diligence as they work through the issues on your behalf as we work through that. And I think it's always good to understand for staff particularly, to understand what your expectations are. The last thing we want is for council to say, we need to make a change because you weren't going in the direction we wanted you to, but never told the staff what that direction should be. So I think this helps define that on your behalf. One of the things that I also did was ask the city manager, having been here just about a year, to talk about what his expectations of staff, of council are, and also what his expectations of staff are, so that they in turn will know what his, not only your expectations, but his expectations as you all work together as a team. His expectations are for everybody to trust and be patient with each other, to make sure that staff is not missing the point, keep them in the role that they need to be in and in the direction that they need to go, and to work together, be a policy board. Expectations that he has of staff are first to meet the council's expectations, that's primary, and then accomplish the council priorities, and we're going to talk about those here in just a little bit. Display the highest level of professionalism as they work together and find the best way to do things, not just the easiest way. This outlines that relationship between the council and its primary role, vision, mission, policies, procedures, and staff, administration, and management, and that the city manager and his office provides that information flow and that connectivity between you and the staff and between staff and you as you work on a daily basis together. We talk about leadership, communication, expectations, and then visionary planning, proactive visioning and planning. And so these are the elements primarily of a good visioning process, of a good strategic process, and we don't ever want to hold things hostage that matter least to those things that are most important as we work through, and the visioning and the goals and the priorities are some of the most important things that a council can do through the course of your time together. You don't have a vision statement, but what we did talk about were mission, were vision elements. What is, what do you want Nakadochee to look like when it grows up? What are the elements of your vision? And you all talked about those things, to recognize, protect, and celebrate the city's historic areas is bullet number one. Strong medical presence, a welcoming community, and invest in assets wisely, good quality of life things, strong education, honor and improve where possible, and have influence on a strong educational heritage that this community has, a strong, independable, and robust infrastructure, strong single-family homeownership and occupancies, a safe community for all, and a community of neighbors where people know each other and can capitalize on their social capital. This list became very important later on in the staff's process of developing an implementation plan, and I'll tell you where that is here in just a minute. Talked about the mission elements. If we know what our vision is, what is our mission? How are we going to get there? Understand and account for economic impacts, ensure optimal use of funds. Those kinds of things are how we go about doing our work and doing our business. All of these things you all came up with, you all talked about and worked through on a much more detailed basis as we worked together through the course of the day in December. We can take those vision elements, we can take those mission elements, and then staff can work on a vision statement or mission statement for you all to eventually review and adopt. After our discussion about governance, we talked about the twenty-twenty-five issues and challenges. These are all listed. Those things that are in red are things that were added through the course of the discussion for clarification and for addition, and those are, again, outlined in your report. We also talked about operational priorities, the downtown implementation plan, which is on the agenda for tonight, as a matter of fact, and other things, as you see those, that sort of give an idea of priority, where to, when to attack those, how to attack those, and what steps need to be taken. And then finally, you all talked about the legislative agenda. January comes up, the legislative session in Austin, and so what would be your position with regard to some major issues like water resources, impact of data centers and other kinds of things and potential projects, lot size density requirements that might be coming along from maybe from the legislature back to the cities, utility line relocation issues with regard to major highway projects and other things. You can see those. So what we did in the report was simply outline those and expand on those where needed, but more importantly, we worked with the staff to develop a staff implementation plan, and it's in your packet, it's an Excel spreadsheet, and that plan will be looked at and worked on by the council and by the staff and given to you in the form of a report periodically so that you can kind of see the status of what we did. Those items, those legislative priorities, those operational priorities and council priorities were divided into the eight or nine vision elements that you all established, and that's why those became important, because it helps organize and collate the things that you want to do into logical areas. How is this going to improve public safety? How is this going to affect our historic areas? As you all talked about those, how are those action items going to relate to that? And so when you go back and take a look at that action plan, look at it in the context of the vision elements as well as the action items for those things, and as well as timelines, and who on the staff will have priority or responsibility for that particular area. So it outlined and organized all of your work as we went through the day. Staff has worked very hard on developing that and providing for you a path to see all of these things accomplished and then allow you then to see what the status of those are. So that completes my report, and I appreciate the opportunity. You can see I put red check marks on everything here. So I appreciate the opportunity that you all gave me, that Rick gave me, to come here, meet with you all and meet with the staff, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Ms. Keenan filled out a public comment. Do you have anything to say, Ms. Keenan?
I do not. I appreciate that report, and it sounded great.
Okay, all right. We can check that off, right? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, any discussion from the council?
I was just, sorry, I was just hoping we can get the full report printed and input in our boxes. That would be helpful to us. Thanks. But we really appreciate your help. It was great.
Thank you, and I would ask if you feel it is appropriate that you, after you take a look at that, that you may adopt it, and that way it becomes an official document that staff can follow, as council and staff follows. Something for you to consider.
I appreciate you doing this, Ron. It was a good experience, and it was a pleasure working with you.
Well, thank you. My pleasure as well. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So my only thought is maybe we need to see the mission statement before we adopt it, you know, to fill it in or whatever. I think that would be helpful to see the things that are, the holes.
To be done, the to be done.
Just complete it, and then we can adopt the whole thing.
Okay, yeah, this is just a presentation tonight.
Right, 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 right. whatever. I think that would be helpful to see the, the things that are, the holes.
To be done, the to be done.
Just com- complete it, and then we can adopt the whole thing.
Okay, yeah. This is just a presentation tonight.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you all. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it.
And just for clarity, all of those documents are posted in the agenda, right, Rhonda?
Okay, next item, uh, item B, receive a presentation and hold discussion regarding the low-income housing tax credit. Uh, this is Phil Pot.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There's a PDF in the Google Drive. Can I? Hold, hold on one moment, please, while I pull up my presentation.
Let me get down there. I'll, I'll fix it.
George, just, we could move this to the end of the evening.
Yeah.
No, I'm joking. I'm joking.
It's a long evening.
We got it. We can adapt and overcome. We're used to that in economic development, right? Um, so several of you have um, been through this before, so for those of you that have many times, Councilmember Bellinger, I apologize, but I like to um, present this every year to make sure that everybody's on the same page and everyone remembers um, the process and the procedure. Some years, this can be quite controversial. Some years, pretty quiet. So we just want to make sure we all have the same information. Housing tax credits, it's a program that was created back in the eighties to replace the old um, project housing development, um, that probably comes to your mind when you think of affordable housing. Um, it is essentially a way to create a federal income tax credit in exchange for building affordable housing. Here in Texas, it's administered by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. You'll hear people um, shorten that to T D H C A. You'll also hear us shorten the title, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit to L I H T C. I'm not going to run through that math, but essentially they get a credit on their income taxes for the valuation of the property. And that subsidy is then used to lower the rent of the um, development. So the state of Texas adopts a qualified allocation plan every year. Um, that plan essentially says this is how we are going to allocate our credits. Um, they define regions. We're in a region with Lufkin and a few of our rural counties. Um, and then those applications are competitively scored every year. So they're scored based on the amenities that they're going to provide, um, the income and rent levels that they are limiting to proximity to jobs. So the location of the development is important. Um, and then also resolution of support from a city council. So that point system, like I said, includes um, a local government support and funding. In this case, that funding, um, what we've done in the past, funding can count as um, a fee waiver, as long as that fee waiver is is greater than $250. They will also ask for state representative support. Historically, our state representative and state senators have asked what you all have decided. We forward your resolutions to them, and they typically will just do the same as you. Um, and then um, financial feasibility, obviously. They want to make sure that that the, the project will work pre-application participation. So everyone that wants to apply submits a pre-application. Um, and that allows us to see who all is applying in our region, and then um, after that, a few weeks later, a final full application is due, and that would include your resolution of support should you choose to adopt one. So just real briefly, um, we, every year I would kind of like to touch on where we are as a community as far as our income levels go. Um, I'm happy to see that our median income is inching up there. Um, obviously, we want it to be as high as the rest of the state, but we know that that's not happening in East Texas yet, but we are getting closer to Angelina County, so that's exciting news for us. Um, our median gross rent is also something to look at. We have a fairly low um, gross rent, especially when you compare our median income to Angelina County and our gross rent to median, our, our gross rent to Angelina County. So I just thought those were interesting numbers for your comparison, especially when you're thinking about affordable housing. So these are the charts that the state uses to determine the um, income limits for someone that is eligible to live in a, an affordable housing development, and then also the rent limits. So AMFI is area median family income, and then AMI is area median income. Um, so you can see there, if you are a four-person household, um, and the development you want to live, live in limits um, those that can live there to an AMFI of 80%, then your income would have to be less than $60,000 to live in that community. Um, if you would, are interested in a two-bedroom unit, then that rent is going to be limited to $1,350. So nice to kind of know what we're talking about when the development gets built. We have many of these across the community. Um, that's actually one of the reasons why a resolution is required of you, because we have more than two times the state average of these type of units. As you can see on this chart, they've been built since the nineties. You're all familiar with these properties. They are spread out all over Nakadoches. Um, most recently, and it's not on this chart, um, because it hasn't been developed yet, but you did recommend a, or you did adopt a resolution of support for a development that is on the east loop between Highway seven and Highway 21. So this year for 2025, we have three developments that are requesting your support so far. Um, the pre-application date hasn't passed yet, so there may be somebody that just hasn't contacted me, but that's pretty unlikely. Um, I'm going to run through the locations of these individually, but just so you know, the, there are three. The first is Pioneer Crossing on Old Spanish Bluff Road, which is on the west side of town. Um, they're looking at 80 units. Um, they are interested in targeting families. So in, in these developments, they can either target families, which doesn't have to be a family. It could be a single person or senior citizens. And so in this case, they are interested in in renting to families. Um, the zoning, as for all three of these, is B2 general business, so all three of these are looking at properties that are zoned properly. The second one is Elm Grove Apartments, which is on University Drive, um, little bit of a smaller development at 66. And they have said that they will support either elderly um, residents or families, whichever the council would prefer. So if you have strong feelings about one segment of the population, then then that is the direction they will go. And then the third one, um, doesn't quite have a name yet, but we're calling it the Nakadoches Mixed Income Senior Community based on the, on the, the documents that they provided us, um, and that is proposed for Colonial Drive, um, near, at the Daily Sentinel Building, and they are targeting seniors. So just some, some close ends of the map there. This is Pioneer Crossing for families, so that's Spanish Bluff Road, um, like I said, on the west loop. This is Elm Grove Apartments, which is on University Drive, just south of the post office. There's a wooded area there, south between the post office and the commuter lot, and this is the property they are interested in. And then the third um, is at the side of the Daily Sentinel, so um, that is on Colonial Drive. Um, I think we're all familiar that the clone, that the Daily Sentinel property has been for sale for quite some time. So tonight, you are not being asked to take any action. We just wanted to introduce the item to you, um, give you an opportunity to speak to your constituents in the next few weeks. Um, when we bring this back to you, which I believe will be on January 7th, um, that is tentative, um, you have several options. The applicants are all requesting that you adopt a resolution of support and a $250 fee waiver. That would give them the maximum amount of points for their application to the state. Um, you also may adopt a resolution of no objection, which just says, we don't want to get in your way, but we're not going to support you. I don't believe that that gives them any points. Um, a resolution of opposition um, is exactly what it sounds like, um, and certainly would not give them points. I'm not sure how that would affect their application. Um, and then you can also take no action, which has been done in the past many times. Um, I do believe we have a couple of representatives from um, the developments here tonight. I informed them that I would just be presenting this, and there's, there's no vote taken tonight, but if you have specific questions, a few of them in the audience may be able to answer those if you are interested.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
Uh, when we adopt a resolution of support, is it for a project or all projects?
You are reviewing them each individually, so you have the option of, of adopting any one of these for any one of the projects. You could do a resolution of support for all three, just one, two, or none.
Okay, thank you.
Are all three um, for profit?
Yes, I believe so.
Are any of them local? Are Texas developers?
Um, several of, I, but I know at least one of them is, is a Texas development. I believe all three probably are. Um, I don't think, none of them are local, though. We don't really have anyone here that does that locally.
They're going to all make their presentation the next board meeting, right?
Correct, correct. We will invite them to.
This is just in free, for your information, basically.
Yes, yes.
Pardon me? Oh, yeah, okay. Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Keenan, do you have anything to say?
Uh, no, all my questions were answered.
Okay, alright. Thank you. We'll mark that one off. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to the next item. Thank you, Larissa. Okay, next item, item C, discuss and consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate an agreement with the Goodman Corporation to provide professional consult, consulting services as described in solicitation RFQ 25-10-106 for developing, planning and implement, implementation strategies for downtown Nakadoches. Mr. New.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike New, Executive Director of Development and Infrastructure. Um, tonight's item is simply council's direction to staff to enter into negotiations on a contract. Obviously, we will bring a second item back for action on an actual contract once those negotiations have taken place, but what we're doing tonight is, is wanting to present to you um, just a- and getting feedback for direction. The items of focus for a particular contract with the Goodman Corporation. Um, we, we highlighted implementation strategies for a reason. The, the topics that would be of particular focus may include parking, jobs, redevelopment of buildings, um, drainage and utility capacity, funding sources and grant opportunities. Other items of focus for this analysis would include some potential funding and equity partners that may include uh, Stephen F. Austin University, um, Texas Department of Transportation, Brazos Transit District, and even the private sector. What staff has done up to this point, after issuing the request for qualifications, we received two bids, one from the Goodman Corporation, one from Asakura Robinson. Um, both uh, very qualified, both provided many, many examples and and very strong information as to the specifics of the scope of the RFQ. We assembled a staff panel, uh, similar to what we did for the fire stations, uh, contract that we'll be uh, presenting to you here in the next meeting or two. We brought in staff from engineering, finance, economic development and community services, and scores are based on background qualifications, project experience, methodology, technical approach, uh, and references. Um, some examples of the evaluation criteria we used uh, were the staff capabilities in downtown and transit planning, description of at least three projects complementary in nature, detail approach, approach to completing projects in a phase-by-phase fashion, and then suggestions to maximize efficiency and innovation. After all these firms were scored, uh, Goodman Corporation achieved the highest overall rating, and staff is seeking council approval to uh, enter into negotiations with Goodman, and we'll return for a second, uh, council action to authorize the execution of those documents. Um, the anticipated term, our, our goal for this is, is approximately six months. We're, we're not looking to extend this for an ex, a long period of time. And what I want to mention here is, is at the end of the summary, um, you know, we may include data that was uh, presented and prepared as part of previous plans. This is not, what's being presented tonight is not a dismissal or denial of the downtown vision plan documents that DTJ Consulting had presented. And in fact, I've gone over previous meetings. I've, I've even brought examples of some of those recommendations that that are very similar to what, uh, some things that may be of focus with this particular contract. So we are using um, a lot of data. We are looking a lot of data. None of that will be dismissed in how we look at how this contract is put together and some of the objectives that will be part of the scope. When we do bring that back to you, we will have those details as part of the contract, and then you'll take action on whether or not to approve. And I think City Manager has some additional context.
And let me kind of set the table on this. First, let me say that in a previous life or lives before, I was a VP with Goodman. Actually, I left uh, Goodman in 2011, so you're talking about, I've been more places than Johnny Cash had in that song since then. So uh, I also, you know, prior to that, spent five and a half years inside the loop, working for HGAC, so 15 years inside the loop in Houston. Barry was, Barry Goodman was the first CEO of Houston Metro when it was stood up. Uh, actually, he helped write the legislation. Prior to that, he'd been senior legal counsel of what became Federal Transit Administration. People used to be higher performers. He, I think he was senior legal counsel at 26 or 25, and I think he was the head of Metro at 30, so. So and in, in terms of, of the other firm too, I actually worked with KG Asakura as a, um, he was a sub to, to us on the private sectors on, at Goodman at different times, and I think the engineers on both teams, uh, either on the public side, private side. So I did want to make that statement very clear. Staff, they ran the qualifications, they did the analysis. Uh, let's talk about the plan, kind of where we're at. And I, and it's really less of a plan, because you're going to hear, you've always already heard me go on about planning, even though I started in planning, and even civil engineering and the typical boxes that folks try to fall in, whether it's pedestrian or transit, and it ends up not being applicable to the real world more times than not, because you can't afford it. Uh, so it's got to be context sensitive. Uh, the other piece is, you know, you can't take the same thing and apply it everywhere. Believe me, I've, I've seen people try, and I've been everywhere. So it, it works certain things. You don't take the same tool to every single job. Every city's got a different economic base, as we'll see on some other items later. So I think our goal is to take as much of the prior data that was provided in the prior plan, and, and admittedly, I would probably on the front end highlight about half a dozen areas which they should focus in. Nothing that we come up with should, I guess, strap the city with intensive, long-term debt. There could be some items of debt, but in the grand scheme of things, most of the things we should focus on are those things that are low-hanging fruit, that we have potential partnerships on, be they public, private, grant, state, transit-related. So, and I can tell you, having worked in Galveston twice for the city, including having run transit uh, as director, uh, when I was also ACM, having put together Uptown Houston's original pedestrian transit master plan, Upper Kirby's, uh, West Chase, Greater Southeast Management District on the third ward, as well as also managing, I think, the Greater East End, um, over by the old Neenfus. Among others, is at the end of the day, if you can't pay for it, it really doesn't matter. So what we want to look at are parking, drainage, capacity in terms of utility capacity, what other things that could enhance downtown or programming of downtown, highest and best use of buildings. So we would also look at, how many buildings do we have? Could uh, historic tax credits been brought to bear? Would there be partnership opportunities and also money brought to the table? Uh, let's say if you had a shared uh, parking facility of some type, and where would that go? Uh, and then obviously the grant piece. Uh, one thing we did when I was in Galveston was um, we actually uh, started the, because the old rubber, uh, the steel-wheeled trolleys were being rehabbed out of state, post-ike. We actually used hotel motel funds and acquired uh, what are now the Seawall Rubber Tire Trolleys. That went over so well that even their, their regular fixed route uh, vehicles have now been, are now being converted to the same type of vehicles, because they're just more popular. So things like that with, working with Brazos Transit as a potential partner. What we're not doing, we're not going to throw North Street into this. You do have, obviously, we're going fairly aggressively at the items that were outlined in Ron Cox's. Thank you again, Ron, wherever you are, in cyberspace or wherever. Um, and I've known Ron a long time, 20 years plus. So we're going to look at North Street separately. Uh, we've had an initial meeting with Tex that, as we said we would, as identified in the plan. And we're going to look at what other grant opportunities, connectivity, pedestrian uh, environment, uh, even, you know, maybe even access management, shared driveways, uh, crash data. We're going to look at everything. Even if we can find key places near the, near the campus where we could bury lines, change some of the turning movements, and make it less chaotic and a lot more aesthetic. Um, and then the other piece is And then the other piece is, with everything that's happening at SFA, this is the time for us to do this. Could we create a meaningful connectivity piece? And I realize everybody has said, yes, we've got, I know we've got pedestrian groups, we've got other things, and you know me, I don't run with any PAC. So, whether it's the City Manager side or the planning side, that being said, there are certain things that we should be looking at, be they transit, pedestrian, aesthetics. I mean, just one thing to think of, you know, even just a resurfaced North Street that might have the historic style lighting we have right now downtown, all the way just to the entrance of the university. That would be one thing, would change things significantly. If you also had over time Brazos convert their vehicles to a rubber tire trolley style, that would create another type of environment. Now, if you had highest and best use of some of the buildings that aren't, some of which are in very close proximity to us, including maybe restaurants, maybe additional lodging, maybe office, maybe things like that, not getting into any of the other residential pieces or anything like that. I think if you go back to our other larger, big picture, y'all want to focus on infill for single family. So, this plan is not going to be all things to all people. It is going to try to focus on if there's a parking improvement, if there's a transportation improvement, if there are other uses that would complement, not conflict with downtown, and also try to take into account things like the Lenana Creek Bridge, the what-ifs on North Street, and the growth down at SFA. So, I know I'm not very articulate, I know I'm a little bit of a bulldog, and one thing Ron would probably, I'm sure I told you, you can only have one of me, because it'd be bad for business, but we are gonna go, once we roll this thing out, start looking at the data, we're gonna try to put together, as a next step, a scope to bring back to y'all to consider. It's gonna go after the high points, those half a dozen high points. And then what we would probably also ask is that y'all do a fairly narrow stakeholder group that, I mean, if you do it by committee like before, you're probably gonna end up in the same place. I would narrow the focus, I would take the prior public input and at either a midpoint, and then towards the end, I would also come back with some other public input, but not a lot. I wouldn't spend the money on that, because I think you're gonna really need to look at some of the hard capital things that are staring us in the face right now, that if we don't take advantage of it, we will miss an opportunity to submit. And let me say, some things we would be requesting that the team or staff begin submitting some things in terms of pursuit of funds, even before we get really deep into this, because you've got an appropriations call for projects, a transportation enhancements call for projects is coming up with TechStud. We've got drainage calls for projects. So, some things that at least could be attached to this plan in proximity, we probably would be going after, or we'd be seeking other partnerships along the way. So, not to beat this dead horse, it's gonna be high-level, but then it's gonna dive in to how we would get it done and how we would pay for it. And one thing I've said, I said this in another meeting, we're not taking a civil engineering... No offense to those folks, we're not taking the approach, okay, here's a hundred million dollars of stuff, now just go past bonds and figure it out. That is unsustainable, we've got bonds, there's things we need to do with bonds, there may be some other opportunities that we don't have a choice, okay, you might have to have some debt on a few pieces, because there's just no other way. However, there's a lot of other ways to pay for things. And we've let the delegation, state and federal, know that we're going after these things, and we have updated them that the outcome of this plan, or even before this plan is finished, some of those pieces we may be pursuing.
And Council, this firm's financial and economic analysis will help us down that road. I think our interest is to get something moving. Season opportunity now, we know there's timing elements to everything, and the analysis that will be provided will help further any applications for federal or state funding, or even working with private sector partners. So, this is simply a next step in that process. Any questions, Council?
All right, thank you. Let me get to the...
I do have a question.
We'll get to that, let me get... Anne, do you have anything to say?
Well, that was a lot of information, Mr. Fairbairn, that was. And I don't know what I had to say without looking back and thinking about that, thank you, Rhonda.
I wanted to speak because I was on the steering committee for the downtown plan. Who was on, were you on that, Kathleen, or was Brad on that one? You were on that one, weren't you? Somebody from City Council was, but...
I think Roy and Amelia.
We had, but a lot of people worked very hard, we had lots of volunteers, lots of community input, meetings and meetings and meetings, and I know that that plan's not been adopted, and, but yet we're using parts of it. I wonder why we don't adopt the plan, or if you plan to like make a new one and adopt it, or how that's gonna come into play. I appreciated hearing Rick say that we would have lots of community input. That was my biggest concern, was that would all be lost, because...
He can answer your question.
There's a lot of, so that was mostly what I was concerned about at this point.
He can answer your question.
Thank you.
So, I think one piece is that prior plan effort was happening in the context of COVID. Since then, you've had UT and SFA that occur. You've also had some uptick in general commercial, but we've also had an uptick in things in downtown. We have some buildings already in play or being gutted, significant ones, and discussions about parking. So, I think since it's not a complete plan and it did not include those items, that is where we can take prior input, some of the prior concepts, mesh what we know now, and then also what some of the opportunities are that did not exist with, be they public or private sector, because let's face it, we didn't have a major employer that was active right now, working on one of the buildings. So, what does that do even in your parking analysis or your potential analysis if... Let's say it's a one-level parking deck, or let's say it's a garage, a three-level, and you've got downtown employment, so that means you're probably gonna be calculating some other things, such as pedestrian activity, probably need for casual dining, and then, you know, right now we have Brazos Transit parking behind us, when in fact, they probably need some type of quasi-terminal, at least a pull-out, which would integrate into either a parking facility or a super stop. Those are kind of an in-between. So, I think, and I think the other piece that is missing, just my look at it, it doesn't get in to how to pay for it. So, that's where I'm saying this would take elements of the prior plan, and it would take the most viable ones, and then provide recommendations on how to, in the context of everything we know now, implement them and pay for them.
Got you?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we had another one, Mr. White?
I think all my questions have been answered, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Okay, now, we can go council discussion.
I just have a couple of questions. I'd like, I'd like to know what the deliverables are in this that you're looking at? And then, as a sub-question of that, you mentioned three funding opportunities that were coming up. I know Goodman, I love it that they are connecting capital to communities, I love that that's their goal. Do you expect them to be part of whatever application for those three grants that are coming up soon? So, those are...
I would say yes, because as y'all remember, when y'all approved their pursuit for appropriations last year, and I know that final bill has to be approved, we have, you know, a million dollars for drainage that they've already, and that was a twenty-four-nine, it was twenty-five thousand dollar for going after two projects, the other was three million for I-69. So, there's four million, so I'm not saying it'd be a fifty thousand, but if you actually look at their, their, over the history, I mean, just take some examples, there's over fifty million of federal funds in the Waterway corridor. There's tens of millions in Galveston, including the downtown terminal. The Round Rock Downtown Terminal, Transit Terminal, Parking Deck was also a Goodman project. The Bryan Terminal and Bryan College Station was as well. So, there's enough examples, I know we're rural, that means some of what we would do would be going after slightly different categories of funds. I've already alerted staff to a few of them, having worked on earmarks in a different life and having had to fly into DC and those other things, which is, I don't do that anymore. But, and I realize I might sound a little rote sometimes, because I want to go straight to the what we can get done. And maybe it's because I'm in my mid-fifties now, or close to it, so.
Let me get back to my question. So, you do expect, yes, for those three, you'll expect them to help?
Well, at least, I think between us and them, and if there is something that's an immediate low-hanging fruit, let's say we identify something that, maybe it's preliminary engineering money, as an example, for, and design money, not the capital implementation, but say, design money for a garage. It's, you know, half a million, seven hundred fifty thousand, and we can go without having to have it shovel-ready. We may have a general location, yeah, I think we'd pull the trigger on that, because if you can have an order of magnitude, just based on acreage, cost per space, you'd have an idea roughly of what your preliminary engineering and final design costs would be. You wouldn't get all your soft costs, but that could start the process and jump-start it quickly.
Okay, that's all real practical, and we just have to do what we can do and needs to get done. And so, is there another deliverable, or are you looking at like a final report, or...
Yes, and a lot of that will be worked out in the negotiation process about what can fit into that six-month timeline. Again, we want to be moving on things in a short timeframe.
And the one thing is, and having been on the other side, on the consulting side, and they do do contracts like that, a percent of task completion approach with deliverables before you actually pay, we want to make sure, having looked at some of the things in the past here, we want to make sure that tasks and deliverables are in the contract are also tied to when we pay. Now, I know we even had, one of our bullet points with Ron, is active management of our consultants and contractors, and maybe because I was one for ten years, and also quasi-governmental for another five-plus, five-and-a-half, and I had to manage those as well, I'm a little bit more critical of people performing, because I've had to be on the other side, just to make, you know, make sure people got paid in the office, you had to perform, and provide those deliverables before you could send that invoice. It wasn't just, you know, burning time. So, we are going to make sure that you've got, this is not intended to be a document that sits on a shelf. This is going to be a roadmap to get things done, and in what general timeframes, and in some cases, maybe more than one approach on how to fund them.
And as soon as possible.
Yes, sir. Okay, all right, we just need a...
I have one more thing there, but I think other council people may have thoughts. I'll add afterwards.
Go ahead. Oh, yeah, I'm just curious, because I'm on the ordinance committee.
Yes, sir.
So, are we, we're making plans about zoning and parking, different changes to ordinances and things. Are we getting ahead of the cart with these people coming in? Are they gonna say, oh, well, you should have done this, or...
I think with the, and that's a good point, Councilman, I think with the timing of our subcommittee discussions, as we engage the consultant and they work on building their plan and their deliverables, I think that can work simultaneously, and Tim, I think we may not come to a conclusion within six months on some of the items that I know the subcommittee is kind of wrapping their minds around, and those recommendations we obviously work through planning and zoning and councils. So, I think they'll be working simultaneously. If there's some elements that may be of focus for Goodman Corporation as they engage their contract, then we'll make sure and, you know, inform the subcommittee and let that, make sure we're all on the same page with those two.
Because that would help us if we knew the direction they were headed in, and they gave us.
And I think, I think staff's kind of gonna be the tandem of both of those.
So, let me throw one thing out. I know we talked about in the, and this is where I think it would come up. So, if you imagine, if you're running kind of a grid with, let's say, historic-style trolleys, and you've got more things going downtown, more things going on back in the park, and you've got a parking facility, if, let's say, Mound was the way back or part of that, and you're running north, Mound, and maybe, you know, maybe even twenty-minute, thirty-minute headways, and two vehicles at peak periods, and I don't want to get ahead of myself in the transit stuff. But, let's say you're running like that, then it obviously, I know your concern would be Mound, and then if we did that, does that just mean that Mound has, because we really, on the front end of this, we're not really looking at this as something that was gonna change all the urban forms, meaning this is not a redevelopment plan, comprehensive plan approach on really what we are. It's the addition of a few things, it's making some of the things we have better, and then cleaning up some of the corridors. So, let's say pedestrian-scale lighting and some sidewalks on Mound. Let's say that that came out as a recommendation, and your concern was, hey, I'd like to see Mound look more historic, not less, where you've got some buildings that came in, maybe in the fifties or sixties that look like kind of Rothko design or something that, you know, like a little...
I think that'd be very hopeful if that happened, if that didn't happen.
So, but let's say you wanted it something that looks a little bit more, blends with the older side of things, then we could look at overlaying at least within that corridor, maybe historic incentive, like, okay, there's an underutilized building, it's gonna be torn down, you know, to not look contrived, but we don't want something, we want something that's gonna complement that corridor. So, maybe that would be the time that we could provide back, or the team could provide back a recommendation to the committee saying, hey, we're looking at this, you want us to stay away from it, or even council first, and say, if not, if you want us to look at something, because we think this might kind of activate the corridor in a way, more pedestrian activity, would you like us to also include as part of the recommendations an incentive to make it retro again or something? So, just like that.
You know, I sparked on the trolleys with the rubber tires, because I've been to Galveston, I've seen them in other towns, and it seems like to me, if we could just put one or two wins on the board, so that people were like, oh, my gosh, things are happening, instead of people are talking, you know? We always talk, we never do, not very often, and I'm not talking about you guys, I'm talking about what I've seen. So, just something like that, if we could get that rolling, then I think that would give you more enticement, people would be more on board, not to make a joke, on a lot of other things, or a parking place, you know?
And some of the creativity and discussion that drives one or two projects here in the short term may be, may be applicable for city at large, changes that council and others see as a positive. So, that drives some of that subcommittee discussion as well, and certainly will include those groups that are involved in that.
So, the reason I throw that one out is, okay, we've got the oldest city, very nice downtown, very nice, right-sized campus, that's going to get even nicer. And if your child was going to school there, you really don't have like a consistent... I know we've got Brazos Transit, but we can work with them on some of the routes as well, to a degree. Might cost us a little more, but you really just don't have like a known. You always know it's gonna be there in a fairly short, so why do you not sometimes see kids without cars down here eating more often? Well, you know, if you had a, if you had one that was running a nice deliberate grid, it'd be a lot easier for that. So, those are the, I mean, it's not really rocket science, I worked in it, so it couldn't have been, that was my dad, not me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You go with something chattering. I'm going to say something.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I, I'm just going to say. I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, Brad, about getting things done, you know? And, uh, and I'm not defending or taking up for anybody. But. Rick has been here a little over a year. We now have a full staff, almost. We're still waiting on maybe one or two more to complete Rick's staff. I have seen more come out of Rick's office in the last few months. But it takes time to get them to where you can see it, you know? This is the, this is the hard part. It's, it's, it, it, it's kind of like, um. This is the ugly part before you actually see results, you know? And it's the hard work, you know, but it's coming, you know? And, uh, I, I'm excited about it. I, I, I just hope people will be a little bit more patient with us because, uh. It hadn't been easy for him and we were without a city manager for what, six months, eight months, whatever, before we found him.
Yeah, well, I'm not criticizing current, current company. He's got broad shoulders. Look at that.
But believe me, he, he is, we, we, we gave him direction on what to do and believe me, he's in overdrive right now, I promise you, you know? And he's trying to find the, the easiest, uh, and the least expense on the city of Nacogdoches. And take advantage of federal, state, public, private monies to get it done.
And Brad, since I haven't made you smile enough today, think of me as a human pinata with a tie.
Well, it is your birthday, so I'm being nicer than normal.
So, a couple of questions I have that are pretty quick. Uh, what's our timeline to have a contract negotiated? So when do we plan to have this back before us and starting the work?
I'd say about thirty days, right?
Yeah, I, I, we, in a perfect world, even with holidays, we'd really love to come by the second meeting in January with a, at least a skeleton scope. That, that we could get down to it.
So, why, why is the recommendation one and not both? Just. One consultant and not both, just for clarity.
Well, I. Really for clarity is if we try to, my hope is that we, we actually end up with a, um. Cost effective, uh, outcome with this using some of the prior data. Now. You know, I'd, I'd have to get, I'd have to, they've run the, they have run, Mike can actually probably speak to this. Obviously, I didn't dig deep into their, actually, I saw the score sheets. So, you're talking about why didn't we not include, uh, KG as an example on some of the, the, uh, schematics or, or visuals? Because of his architecture background and KG's great. Um, if that's something you want us to, you know? I, I will say this before, in a different, in, in that other life, there were a few times where we competed on jobs. And I was, either I or a portion of the team were cherry picked, where the company didn't get the job. And then they asked if we could actually be, uh, complement another team in a different role. And so, I mean, I have full confidence if, in terms of, let's say, let's say we do a scope that, for Goodman. And we focus really on was the parking piece, the transportation piece, going after some initial money. And, uh, the drainage component. If, if you would like, if you feel that we would need kind of a part B. Uh, with this to get some schema- I guess to get some elevations of what something might look like. From KG's shop, if that's what Oscar Robinson. If, if that's what your thought is, um, we'd have to probably kind of talk through that.
Let me, let me jump in and just say, I was just talking about transparency, about the process, why we went this direction. Not to say we should do something different, just to say, why did we go this way?
Sure, and, and, and I'll, I'll just add a little bit of context. You know, with our drainage projects, we went with, uh, two consultants. The design works straightforward. The engineering is what it is. We, we know both consultants would design something that would work. So, because that was straightforward, we, we felt comfortable, uh, engaging two consultants at the same time. All working on different independent projects, but sort of working collectively to accomplish our goal. Here, it's a little bit more, more discretion, a little bit more creativity, a little bit more gray area that they're working in. So, stretching our time and, and, and resources between two consultants on something like this, I think would be very difficult.
And that's the exact answer I wanted. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, Leo. The only other thing I wanted to add, um, I love actionable plans. I, you know, I get so frustrated with pie in the sky stuff you can't do, so I love actionable pa- plans. But I, I wanted to address, I'm, I'm following up on the mayor's comments. And I think, uh, he was reading my mind. Um, I, I just wanted to say that the staffing patterns that you've established, Mr. Beverlin. Um, are optimal for going out and getting outside dollars. And people may not understand how you have to have excellent experienced staff. Who are, um, given this job in order to utilize outside dollars. And, and the outside, we, we could just go broke. We have dreams that are so much bigger than our budget. And to have a staffing pattern, it pays for itself in such a short time. I know I get questions maybe from some of you who are there, why are we spending so much money on this staffing? We're spending money on, on staffing and really not that much. We're reorganized a lot. And we're spending and organizing in a way that we can optimize our small resources and bring in other dollars. I think Goodman says, technical solutions when local capital is scarce. And that's right, what we need to be doing, so I appreciate it. I just want you to, to know, all of you, I appreciate you. The staffing pattern and that, and thank you, Mayor, for saying the same thing.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I'd like to make a motion if we're good. I want to authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with the Goodman Corporation to provide professional consulting services. Uh, as described in RE or RFQ twenty-five-ten-one-oh-six.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item seven D, consider approval of resolution of city council of the city of Nacogdoches, Texas. Adopting two thousand twenty-five legislative priorities for the eighty-ninth state legislative session. Mr. Beverlin, you sure have talked a lot tonight.
Yeah, and, and on that, on that staff thing, and let me just say this, my rule of thumb is that everybody has to be smarter than me, so that's. That's not real hard, so. Uh, I, we do have a great staff and, uh, our subject matter experts usually have a lot more depth. They're not just a one trick pony, unlike some of us. Um, so, we had, um. In the retreat, y'all identified the legislative priorities. So what we've done, and Jerry's done a very noble, accurate, uh, job in pulling together this resolution. We've identified, we've taken those legislative priorities. Uh, Larissa's also been integral in this. And we've identified really what are the. So I can just run through these bullet points, you know, legislation that supports local control. Uh, opposing preemption. Uh, communicate, being able to just continue to communicate with our, our, our delegation. Uh, diminishing, uh, the ability of, of cities to, um, invest in, in municipally owned assets.
Are we supposed to be seeing slides of this or not?
Um. I don't, it's in your packet. I, I don't, that's beyond my technical. That's why he's here. Um.
Okay.
You know, we'll, we'll be going after things, supporting the airport. Uh, the other one is making sure that our water supply, I think that's a big one that was identified. Um, the inter basin transfers and tapping all the, um, all the aquifers. Uh, let's face it, DFW and, uh, central Texas, they keep adding population and projects, including data centers and other things. So those are the type of things that we really want the legislature to look at. The answer before they get to DSal can't be drainage taxes. Because that endangers not just agriculture, life as we know it. But also our ability to attract, you know, proportionate scale of jobs, manufacturing, things like that that we need. And so, we would like a little bit more common sense on that front. Um. I've, I, the other thing is. Just in terms of, um. Just in terms of economically disadvantaged, uh, communities in East Texas, we think that there does need to be more on that side. We've even included some things on mental health as well. Making sure that that's not a, a low priority. Uh, as y'all know, we do get folks bust here from other communities. And we do think that there are other ways to handle that other than just shift folks around. So, that list is in your, in your packet. And then. Let's see, it's under the next item that the specifics, now the hospital. Making sure we have a robust hospital system and economic development. That was also identified in, in the, uh, retreat as well. And the next item was, is actually where that would be addressed. So, if y'all have any questions about what's included in the, in the packet, I won't run through all of them. It's I sixty-nine. It's, it's, it's a fairly extensive list, but it's based on your prior lists. And then the addition of everything else we had and, and taking out anything that was, uh. Really an opposite, not really an opposition, but that didn't align with that.
Okay, any discussion? Not for D, did we?
Did you have one for E?
She didn't include D on there. He was E. I'm right, y'all are wrong. I know. Okay, so do you need, uh?
Approval of a resolution.
Do I have a motion?
That we approve, uh, the resolution of the ci- that we approve the legislative priorities as outlined in item seven D.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Mayor, before we do that, can we have a five minute recess?
Yeah, let's do three minutes.
I'll run.
Three minute break.
Okay, alright, we're back in session. We're back in session going to items, uh, seven E. Consider approval of resolution of the city council of the city of Nacogdoches, Texas. Urging the Texas Legislature to enact legislation to amend portions of chapter ten sixty-nine. Of the Texas Special District Local Laws Code related to the Nacogdoches Hospital District.
Mr. City Manager.
So I guess I'll take the hickey on this and said, I don't go to the doctor very often. Um, as I'm sick, so. We've had discussions, uh, with some of the members of the, of the delegation on our current, um, arrangement. In terms of the hospital district. And some of the things that might be of value pro- uh, proactively before anything were to get, God forbid, worse. Our goal is to have two hospitals in Nacogdoches. Um. What we've put together and, you know, Jerry can speak to some of the specifics in terms of really how we've, we've attacked it. Getting in, in terms of the, the chapter of the, of the code. But you have one piece that does give us the ability to, let's say the district did have, uh, funds to operate. Everything was not operating in the red, it's operating in the black. They do have the ability to enter into, uh, economic development, uh, agreement with the city. To use those funds for jobs, bring more jobs here. However, there's a multiplier on it and it effectively caps it at closer to twenty-five thousand dollars. Instead of where it could be a quarter of, of the one cent. And the reason I s- I use that as one example. When we went through the budget. No matter how you compared us, and this is really be the whole cent. I think that if it was a quarter of that penny, it would be an improvement. I'm talking about it could be a couple of years from now before that was even available. And, and keep in mind, the legislative session is beginning in January. Uh, if you compare us to all of the other cities that we used as peers and we looked at police and fire. All but maybe Huntsville, when you look at population and budget, we're running about on revenues. Proportionate to population for the city general fund. We're running roughly twenty-five percent behind everybody, no matter what we do. Even with SFA here, even with a good amount of commercial footprint. Um, the other piece goes, uh, speaks to the board composition. That was one of the suggestions. That may not be all of the fix, but it would probably, uh, be beneficial. Uh, at least considered as an interim step. And, and the reason I say interim step. Um, do I think the current paradigm and do I think, we have several, had several discussions on this. Is the current paradigm of the hospital in terms of its level of service proportionate to the number of employees? And what its ability to deliver to the community as a standalone? Is it working at the moment? And, and I think that question kind of answers itself. Uh, at the end of the day, we need it to be, we need the hospital to be righted. There probably does need to be another suitor at some point with a, with a larger system. Whether it's a, a public system or a private one. I'll be the first one to say this. Having spent time in Galveston County, twenty years in Galveston County. If it was a UT flag, it was UT and B flag. And now UT's presence is at SFA and with their strength, their nursing school, would that be better for the community? Definitely, long term, I would think it would be. Um, how would we get there? I don't know if that will get us here. This, again, just because the legislation would even be filed by the delegation, doesn't mean it would get through. It may take a couple of iterations and they may have other suggestions once it's filed. But this is meant to be a joint resolution that would have teeth if the hospital district and the county also joined in it. So that is the intent. And Mayor, if I missed anything. Uh, but one of those pieces, let's say it's righted, at least the capability that down the road. Five years from now, however many, that we could stand up a four B economic development corporation through a cooperative agreement. That the hospital district and the county also agreed to and have that in the legislation.
Let me, let me, I, I'm the one that, that pushed this and put it on the agenda. Uh, so I, I'll speak to both of the, of the changes of the statutes. Um, uh, Jerry wrote the resolution at, at my request. And, and the first, uh, change would be changing the makeup of how, uh. The board is, um. Put on the board. Uh, it's elected now. It's basically a popularity contest. Whoever's the most popular gets the most votes. Uh, and. The, the resolution states that it should be appointed by the stakeholders, that being the city and the county. The next item, as, 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 as Rick, uh, alluded to, was the part in, uh, section ten sixty-nine. Uh, that has to do with the economic development part. That's a mute point. We would like it changed, uh, because they don't have any money, period. You've got people that, that, uh, are worrying about, uh, their pension being fulfilled right now. Uh, and a- again, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but it is what it is. It, it, it's, it's, I said this whenever I became mayor. This is unsustainable. Not only for that hospital and for the people that have worked there and continue to work there. But also for the city of Nacogdoches. And people say, well, you know, we don't want it to go to Avalorum taxes. But let's just take this example right here. And we talked about this during budget and some of you were here, some of you were, weren't here. But that one cent in sales tax that we collect that goes to the Nacogdoches Hospital District. If that one cent of sales tax went back into our general fund, okay? Last year, our Avalorum property taxes were forty-seven cents per hundred. If that one cent went back into the general fund, your property taxes in the city would be seventeen cents per hundred. That's a thirty percent, thirty. That's a thirty percent, thirty cent decrease in your avalorum taxes. So, I mean, you're taking it out of one pocket and putting it in the other. It's the same thing, you know? It's still a tax, whether it be a sales tax or whatever. This, like I said, for us to have a budget every single year that we have to, to run our city, we cannot offer the people of this community the services that they deserve when one-third of our budget is going to something right now that is not really functional at all. And it's out of trust on their pension plan. Now, this is just the first thing that we can do to get from zero to one. And it's going to take a long time to get to where we need to be. But you have to start somewhere, and if you sit on your hands and you don't do anything, then what you're going to get is what you've always got. The same old thing, over and over and over and over again. The last thing I'm going to say, and I was talking about the budget, is we did everything that we possibly could. We scrimped, we cut, we did everything that we could to bring our employees up to a fair and decent wage, particularly the police department. Now, and everybody else, everybody in this whole city. And we wish we could have done more, and we kept telling them, if we had the resources, you know, we could do more. Okay, all right. I'm not going to be able to look at our employees next year. And we come to budget. And they say, well, what have you done, this council, to fix it? We ain't done anything, we're still sitting on our hands. I'm tired of sitting on my hands. It's time to move this ball forward. It's going to take a while to get it done, but I'll assure you, it can get done. That's all I have to say.
Mayor, we had two.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I jumped, Anne, do you have anything to say?
I don't, I don't. I've got a lot of information, I'm still trying to process it all, so thanks.
Okay, Mr. Watt.
You'll state your name and.
My name's John Watt, I live at three zero six Weaver Street here in Nacogdoches, Texas. Now, I don't quite understand how taking one percent from the hospital board is going to solve anything. Then how are we going to finance the hospital? With the, the people of Nacogdoches voted to implement this tax. How can we change it without another vote? It's my understanding that the money's got to come from somewhere. And the alternative is raising the property taxes, which you said should go down. But the county is required to maintain a hospital facility in Nacogdoches. That's state. We have to do it. And it's hard for me to understand how taking money away from the hospital district is going to help it. That's really all I have to say, is that I just don't understand how that's going to work.
Okay, okay. I don't understand what you're talking about, taking money away from the hospital district.
Well, isn't the money we're talking about, that you want part of or all of, is a one percent sales tax? It was voted on by the people, is that true?
I want it whenever the hospital gets straightened out and gets on their feet, and is supported by what they earn, which most hospitals can do.
But that doesn't answer my question. Is the one percent, was that voted on by the people to go to the hospital?
Absolutely, and you would have to have an election to change it, absolutely.
That's my question.
And it doesn't have anything to do with this resolution, not one thing.
Then exactly what are we asking for then, with the resolution?
Pardon me? Well, I can, yeah, we can talk. The resolution is, like I said, is changing the way that the board is elected, instead of being elected, being appointed.
And who would do the appointing?
The stakeholders, the city and the county, and possibly the hospital district. Okay, that's one thing. The other thing is giving them the authority instead of just, and it's already in the statute anyway. Right now, I think the statute reads that as far as economic development, the hospital district can give point two-five percent of one percent of one percent of the sales tax that they collect. Which, just say for rounding sake, we give them ten million dollars a year. And it's a gift, I promise you. Okay, twenty-five percent of one percent of one percent is, right now, if they had the money, they could give the city of Nacogdoches twenty-five thousand dollars. We all want it because they don't have it, you know? We just want to change that statute that whenever they do get on their feet, and most hospitals, like the one on North Street, okay? Which also has to take care of indigent care, and is probably doing most of it now, you know? And indigent care isn't nearly what it used to be back in the eighties when this document was written. I mean, that was over forty years ago. There's so many more federal programs now. There's community services that get funds from the government. There's lots of things. I'm not advocating taking anything away from anybody. I want another hospital, I want that same hospital to stay. But I also want them to be able to stand on their own leg instead of being subsidized by this city and our taxpayers. It can be done.
Okay.
That's all I want.
That's all any of us want, I think.
Yeah, I think it's, this is, is not really a whole big deal. We're not moving the needle on anything, you know?
I just don't want to see the borrowing, taking out of one pocket to put in the other.
Well, we're doing it now anyway. It's the same thing, we're doing it now anyway. We're doing the same thing right now. You're, it's a sales tax, okay? But if that sales tax money went back into our general fund, your sales tax in the city of Nacogdoches would go from forty-seven cents property taxes, forty-seven cents per hundred, to seventeen cents. So it's, you're just shifting from one place to the other. One's called a sales tax, one's called a avalorum tax, you know? It's the same thing.
But the money still has to come from somewhere to fund the hospital.
They should be able to make their own way. That's my only.
And how long has it been since the hospital actually made its own way?
I have no idea, it's been a long time. And nobody's ever even addressed this, you know? I have no idea, I've lived here all my life. And there has been some times that it looks like that hospital would be profitable, but sometimes looks are deceiving. Right now, it's not at all. We're subsidizing it. We're not arguing about it, we just want it to change. They ought to be able to stand on their own feet, you know? I think you could, well, there's lots of things you could do, but this is my recommendation, and the council will vote on it. But I don't think we're doing anything to disrupt the day-to-day business of Nacogdoches Memorial Hospital or the district by what we're doing tonight, at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, Rick.
I guess the other thing was, based on some of the prior data, the amount of indigent care was, was what, around three?
Three million.
About three million. And then the debt service on the, on the building, of forty-seven million? What does that equate to annually?
Three point, three point two million dollars.
So, I think the easiest thing to understand is, if it operationally were functioning, including covering the indigent care component and the capital, and let's say they had a larger operational partner, theoretically, and I'm not saying it would be overnight, theoretically, the roughly two-point-five million of ten million ultimately should be available. That doesn't get into the pension and how that would, and the management of that pension, or prior pension fund. That's a whole different discussion. But these would be the what-ifs, if you had the right operating and capital partner. I think that's what you were trying to articulate, that they're not the full amount of the penny, even if you left part of it over at the hospital for both cap for the debt service and for the indigent components.
You know, my idea, as far as I'm concerned, as far as that penny is concerned, the reason that I would want that penny back is to pay those bonds off as soon as possible. Because right now, there, I think we, if we paid them off today, we could pay off about forty-five to forty-seven million dollars. If we pay it out to term, you're about ninety to a hundred million dollars, which is exactly the chart that they're on right now. So, I don't care if it comes back in our general fund or not. I mean, we're on the hook for it, you know? I just seem to pay the bonds off in five or six years, and then it's done, you know? It's not like we want to take that money and, it's a noose over our head. It's the only thing that's stopping this town from growing. I mean, it's, when you take a third of your budget out of here, we can't, there's some things that we can't do, especially for our employees, you know? So, that's all I got to say, until somebody else says something. Rick, go ahead, Rick had something to say.
Okay, it's back on it, I pushed it too hard too many times. I think the only thing else to remember is, if you compare us, I think out of that list, and Larissa may correct me, out of that list, we did the comparison for PD and Fire. Everyone else has a chapter four-B economic development corp, or is Huntsville missing one too? Okay, so, I could use us as an example. I've worked two other cities, one of which had one of two pennies going to transit. And I can tell you, if you're in a competitive situation for a jobs project, and you have no capability for upfront money, and those around you have that four-B economic development money, they may beat you to the punch. And that is, we do have a couple of big projects that have been looking, and they are looking at some of our competitors that actually have a four-B corp. And that puts us, that does put us at a strategic disadvantage for additional commerce that would continue to spin off additional revenue and income for the community, and the people that work.
You know, and that four-B economic development program would also help us, we would have funds too. Where our weakness right now is single-family homes. And there's, there's one project in town that's dead in the water. Because we can't help them with sewage, water, carbon gutter. We can't do it. We don't have the money, you know? So, other cities, that's what they pull from, is their economic development four-B corporation, you know? Which is, has money in it to where you can bring and help subdivisions, corporations that are coming here. I mean, I don't know how Larissa has done what she's done through Nedco with what little funds that she has. And I don't mean this to be disrespectful, all it is is a club. I mean, Nedco is a club, it's a dues-paying club, you know? This town's big enough, this town is bigger than that, you know? We should have a four-B economic development corporation, but we have to pay those bonds off that we're obligated to so we can have our resources back to where we can reinvest back in this city instead of asking for people for twenty-year bonds and twenty-five-year bonds, or certificates of obligations, or water utility bonds. But that's the only resources that we have right now. And we've done a really good job with nothing over the years. Anyway. I'm through again.
I have something to say. I mean, we're kind of all on the same page here, but some problems to me that arise. This has to be passed through the legislation, right? And so all of that's coming to a head in January, so it wouldn't ever make it to January, would it? I mean, most of the legislation that's being debated right now was organized and stood up in June, or last June, or summertime.
Correct, and I believe that our approach really is based on the fact that at some point, we've got to put a foot forward, somebody's going to. We're stepping forward first. It probably, I mean, it could still be filed, you could still file something, the session hasn't started. That being said, your many bills will take more than one session to get through.
Could take a couple of years or something.
And I think that this would at least help start a larger discussion. And the one thing, and God forbid, the financial situation get worse before there's some other remedy, or a remedy would be provided probably from above if they couldn't fully operate, and then that would probably lock things up. Just the pension alone may lock things up.
But the city itself, if you pass this resolution, doesn't make that decision, isn't it? From the city, the county, and the hospital district?
It would be a joint.
So, they haven't written this resolution yet, it'd only be the city tonight?
They're in receipt of the draft, it's only the city tonight, they'd be coming back, I believe, in January.
Yeah, well, I made some calls today and talked to people, and they were like, well, we just got this stuff Monday or something, so.
Correct.
And I was told the county doesn't work quite as fast as us sometimes. And I'm not against it, I'm not against it. But it's not just us making these decisions, it's three, two other entities before it even gets to the legislative process. The other more fundamental issue I have is, you have a board that was elected to the hospital district. And what you're doing now is saying, hey, you got elected, but we're taking the right of you, what you voted for, the people voted for, is now null and void, and we're going to replace an elected board with people of our choosing, which goes fundamentally against our democracy, or republic, or whatever we live in here. And that gets way into the weeds, but I mean, we're doing things like that.
Let me, I'm going to hate to pick on the attorney.
Pick on, pick on all of us.
But Jerry, Jerry's done some research. I know it's easy to pick on attorneys, but it's hard to pick on this attorney, because he's such a good man. So, in terms of the other entities, do you want to rattle off the other ones that are, that do operate via appointed boards from their?
Well, I mean, lots of them do, but these people were voted in for two more years, and you're going to say, no, we changed our mind.
Well, the only thing, that's not what we're saying.
Okay, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just asking.
I believe their term would have to expire before, for each one coming off before you can make those appointments.
That resolution has got to pass first, okay? Nothing would change. The only thing that we would say is that, is that we request our legislatures to go and introduce this bill. Now, if the county wants to join it, they can join it. If the hospital district wants to join it, they can join it also, you know? Now, as far as, as, as taking an elected official off and making him an appointment, no, it doesn't work like that. I mean, when that term.
Ends.
Ends, is when they'll roll off. And I'll give you a prime example, is we do the same thing here. We have a central appraisal district board that is appointed. I mean, it's the same thing. Most hospital districts are not elected anymore, they are appointed. But, we're the oldest town in Texas, and we've got a piece of paper that's dated nineteen eighty or ninety-something. So we're just supposed to keep doing the same thing that we've been doing over and over and over and over again, and get the same results that we've gotten over and over and over again.
Well, what I'm saying is maybe slow, I know this process has been slow, but shouldn't we get the agreement from the county and the? we get the agreement from the county and the hospital district that we all want a resolution, rather than us just stepping out into space?
Brian, I'm gonna give you my opinion.
I know.
You have to start somewhere, and if you sit around and wait for the county, and you sit around and wait for the hospital district, you're gonna be doing the same thing probably next year, but you have taken the lead, you are in leadership now, you are a, you have taken the lead. Now, do you want to follow us, or do you want to just sit there and do nothing? That's the way I look at it.
I'm just trying to give people an option here, because this, you know, the hospital, how, how much in debt is it right now? Ten million, sixteen million, I hear all these figures.
Are you talking about the pension, or are you talking about the loans?
No, I'm talking about just the operating expenses of a hospital, it's...
Well, who knows?
Well, that's another issue.
They don't have financials.
Yeah.
Can't tell you. The bonds are about between forty-seven and, and forty-five and forty-seven million. The pension fund is eighteen million dollars underwater, you know? And there's no systems in place to tell you where they are.
Well, have we tried to get the county and the hospital district to go together on this resolution?
I have talked to both of them this week.
And are they on board?
We'll find out when they have the same discussion.
That's right. But I laid our resolution, or this resolution, pending our discussion and approval of the council, of, this is what is on our agenda, on Greg Sal's desk and Ron DeCave's desk.
Okay. Make speech, Chad.
Since everybody else is, right? This is a topic that I have not discussed in, in a council setting. For the most part, I've tried to keep quiet on the fact that the hospital has an elected board to make those decisions. But we have to face the fact of where they are financially. The, the people who have worked for our hospital district for decades, we heard from, from Gary Woods tonight, who was at the appraisal district and not the hospital, but he gave that many years of his life, and how many pensioners are there that are in that same position with the hospital district? And they don't know what the status of their pension is, and they're probably not going to know for, for the foreseeable future. I have concerns about how this process will go. I don't, I don't know anything with certainty, but I do know that no one has done anything. And I'm not advocating for getting rid of funding the hospital, we need a functional hospital. I think everybody in this room agrees that we need a functional hospital that can provide adequate care for the people of this community, and it needs to be funded. I don't know the solution for the funding, that's not our job. But what can be our job is working collaboratively with the county and the hospital district to come to a resolution of some kind, and maybe our resolution's not perfect, maybe it's not the answer, maybe we have to come back and, and adjust after the other entities have had their discussions. Maybe we can come together and have a joint meeting of the three entities, where we're all discussing it in the same room, but if we don't do something and get this off of go, it's never gonna happen. So, that's, that's my position.
My position is that we have to do something rather than do nothing, and at this point, it looks like we've done nothing for a long time. The hospital itself, no, we don't wanna see it go under, we don't wanna see nothing in Nacogdoches go under. But what we do wanna see is growth here, and if we already underwater, somebody has to throw out the lifeline. And so, if we're gonna be the ones that start it, and be the ones that step forward, let us do it now, and not sit and wait on someone else to do it. And that's what it looks like we've been doing for a while. So, now, I, I would say, let's do it, be done with it, and then when we get with the other entities, let them give us their ideas of what they have come up with, their solutions, and with all of us working collaboratively, we have, we will have sat down and done something for the city of Nacogdoches that we'll all be proud of.
All I'm counseling is, you know, since they just got it, like Friday or Monday, why don't we just sit down with them and see where they're at on it? It's not inaction, it's just your impatience, it doesn't make it an emergency, you know?
Hang on just a minute. Let me answer that, let me answer that. This has been a problem for more than one year. This has been a problem for several years.
But have you asked them to talk with you? Have we had a, a conference together? That's all I'm counseling.
I've been in meetings with them, where we've sat and talked with ardent, and said, "Can we come together?" Nobody wants to come together. I wanna be the leader, is what I wanna be.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Okay, so, um, I also had concerns, you know, we have an elected board, we just elected, and, and the hospital probably needs to be thinking, I mean, this is a great start to get them thinking. So, to me, the way we can couch this, and I'll go ahead and make the, 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 the motion, that we, we approve the resolution as stated in seven E contingent upon its approval by the hospital board and the county. And the reason I'm saying that is because that would then open discussions, and then they all can have their discussions, and we're not preempting an elected board, and so that would do it. I need a second, though.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor? Wait a minute, go ahead, Chad.
I just wanted to ask the city attorney, can we, can we act contingent upon their, is that something we can do?
Nothing's gonna happen.
No.
No, I mean, it's a contingent resolution, it won't go into effect, I guess, if there's no action on the other party's behaves, I mean...
But on the other hand, it's not gonna go into effect if they don't agree.
If there is action, then it wouldn't require you to come back, but I guess there could be some action that would amend or change it, or have a different type of resolution that would then have to be presented to the council.
And, and at the end of the day, I'll just say it, Senator Nichols had said several months ago, unless everybody comes together, everybody, then I really can't do anything and push this forward.
That's why I'm counseling for all of us to get together, I know it's hard, but you're trying to push them off the block, and I get that. But still, even if we do it, if they say, "Man, we don't wanna do it," he's not gonna pursue it, right? Is that correct? He said, "Unless everybody comes together."
That being said, I, I hate to quote my late three A high school football coach that said, "Well, son, I'd rather you take the fifteen-yard penalty and be aggressive." Kinda taking that to heart.
I don't know what that means. I don't have a clue.
Just get out there and hit somebody and, and make it happen, so I, I think being aggressive sometimes, being on the, on the tip of the spear, is, is better than waiting on the sideline. That's what I would say. I'm not a baseball player, so it's kinda hard for me to use other sports.
I just think this is a polite way to do the exact same thing we're trying to do.
Because to clarify, what I'm saying is, if the other entities pass this resolution as it is written currently, then there would be no need to bring this back, but if there's any changes whatsoever from those other entities, or whatever, then it would have to come back to the council if they wanted to adopt, if you wanted to adopt that resolution, whatever is amended by them or proposed by them at that time. So, it would be at a later date, whatever that might be.
Two, anyway.
My intent is to be the first one off, out of the block, and to start this resolution, and then get with them, if they so desire, and amend the resolution to go to our senator and our congressman. If we kick this can down the road again, which is exactly what we're doing, then we're gonna keep getting exactly what we've got. So, there's a motion and a second, okay? All in favor of Kathleen's motion?
Aye.
How many we have? Two? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, I'll make a motion that we have a resolution of the city council and the city of Nacogdoches urging the Texas Legislature to enact legislation to amend portions of Chapter 1069 of the Texas Special District Local Laws Code related to the Nacogdoches County Hospital District. All in favor?
We need a, we need, need a second.
Second, okay. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, so you have to count it the way, however you're gonna count it.
Three in favor, one no, and one abstention. Okay. This is our last meeting for this year. I would like to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and God bless this great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.